I'm going to call to order, today is Thursday, May 16th, 2019, fiscal year 20, operating budget hearings at the Budget and Finance Committee and Metro Council. Before us, we have the Board of Education. Dr. Battle, I will let you do the introductions. You can walk us through your budget and the floor is yours.
Thank you Chair Vorture. I will turn it over first to Ms. Anna Shepherd, Board Member for the MNPS Board of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Good evening.
She's mic. I'm going to need you to use your microphone.
Okay.
You're going to have to start all over again.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Battle. Good evening Chairman Vorture and Chairman Glover and Council Members, Staff and Guests. I am Anna Shepherd and I am the Chair of the Budget Committee for Metro Nashville Board of Education. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come before you to discuss the proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Along with me today, I have our Interim Director of Schools, Dr. Adrian Battle, and our Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Chris Henson, as well as Board Members, Ms. Rachel Lynn Elrod, Ms. Bugs, and our youngest Board Member, Chris II. The Board of Education, the budget that the Board of Education proposed, approved and presented to the Mayor is based upon what the Board believes are the essential priorities necessary for success. These priorities were defined and agreed upon after many hours of review of the school district's current state of affairs, along with projections for our upcoming needs. The Board is proud of its work in defining these areas of necessity and we believe that the budget before you this evening presents a small step toward the necessary investments that are required to give Metropolitan Nashville the school district it deserves and desires. Without hesitation, the Board agrees that improved employee compensation is the most critical investment we can make for our students. It is no secret that teachers and support employees are the heart of everything that we do. Without them, we simply do not have functioning schools. In order to have high functioning schools, we must have high functioning school personnel. This means attracting, retaining, and developing the potential within each employee so that they in turn can develop the potential within each child. There is no doubt that employee compensation is an investment that is truly student-centered. This budget proposes a 10% increase for employees. This proposed increase came after much debate and with the realization[153.22][153.22](APPLAUSE) and with the realization that even this amount does not make up for the lack of investment in past years. If you will remember, the current fiscal year budget did not allow for any salary adjustments, but it did require an increase in insurance premiums and the result was a net decrease in take-home pay for many of our employees. Our district lags behind many other districts in terms of our employee compensation strategy. Peer districts, other southern urban districts have compensation strategies that allow teachers to quickly outpace MNPS teachers on the pay scale. This trajectory allows teachers and support employees to stay in the district in which they teach and become integral parts of the community. As you know, Nashville's economy is doing very well. In fact, doing so well that many employees cannot afford to stay here. It's a cruel paradox, one that prices many of our employees out of the communities in which they serve. While the Mayor has proposed an increase to the MNPS budget, that increase does not allow for the 10% pay increase the Board of Education has recommended. In fact, the Mayor's budget only allows for a 3% increase for employees. Other divisions within Metro have a similar 3% increase, but those divisions also have the opportunity to provide step increases for longevity, open range increases, and a $15 per hour floor for all positions. These modest pay enhancements are absent in the Mayor's proposed budget for MNPS. Employee compensation is not the only priority the Board of Education has identified. Increased investments to maintain pre-kindergarten will pay huge benefits in ensuring that Nashville's children, regardless of income, will start school ready to learn. We desperately need to make the necessary investments in instructional materials so that students have what they need to be successful. They need more than just a classroom set of textbooks. Every student needs a book, period. We need to be working.[279.38][279.38](APPLAUSE)
I want to remind the audience, for the Budget and Finance Committee Members and Metro Council Members, this is our opportunity to hear directly from the Board of Education before we go into our budget work session. So I ask, I know you're passionate, we're all passionate here in this chamber, but this is our opportunity to hear directly from the Board of Education and I ask that you hold your applause. Thank you so much. Go ahead Chair.
Thank you. Every student needs a textbook, period. We need to be working towards that goal. This is a minimal expectation that should resonate with all of us. I had a textbook in school and I'm sure you did as well. Today, more than ever, we need to be certain that our students at least have what we all had several decades ago. As I mentioned earlier, recruiting and retaining high-quality employees is key to the district's success. In order to meet the district's goal and the city's expectations, we need to modernize our information technology and human resource capacities. Without these upgrades, we will not only continue to struggle to attract high-quality employees, but we will have difficulty developing them into the best teachers and support staff possible. Nashville is one of the nation's most diverse cities. Many people move here from all over the world and luckily for us, many of them have children. It goes without saying that our school district needs to increase the translation services that are necessary to serve many Nashville's newest residents. Increased investment in this area will help the entire district, not just those neighborhoods that have a growing population of students who are recent immigrants. Finally, the Board has placed a priority on addressing the non-academic aspects of schooling. We call this social-emotional learning and these skills are critical to ensuring that students can be successful in the classroom and beyond. Skills like communicating and working with others. The proposed budget creates 12 care centers in schools across the district. Is this enough? Not even close, but it's a start. We are asking for an internal investment and we do not think that 12 care centers represents a comprehensive strategy. However, we are mindful that resources have limits. Speaking of resources, there is much discussion about fully funding our district. Please understand me, the Board-approved budget presented before you tonight does not represent what it would take to fully fund MNPS. Let me restate that. The Board-approved budget presented before you tonight does not represent what it would take to fully fund MNPS. We would not be so bold as to bring that before you without being secure in the knowledge that the city was ready for that level of investment. Instead, tonight's presentation is one that allows us to show a measure of respect for our employees, make some modest investments in a few areas that are the most critical to our success, and sustain current efforts in the rest of the district. It allows us to tread water, all while looking forward to the day when our city's resources match the needs of Nashville's children. Now I would like to turn, hear from Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. Chair Vorture, Chair Glover, Members of the Committee, Council Members, thank you for your service to Nashville and your support of public education. As a product of Metro Schools, I owe a great deal to the teachers, staff, and administrators of Metro Schools. I didn't realize it then, but now I recognize the enormous impact the Metro Council had on my life by funding and supporting Metro Schools and the great teachers I was fortunate to have. As a matter of fact, it was encouraging to see and be welcomed by many of my friends and colleagues about an hour ago, as I entered today. They're here in support of our district and MNPS and I thank you and acknowledge you for your presence today and continued support. I appreciate the impact you have on our students and our city. We all want the same things, the best education for our students, and to see our city thrive. The families of Nashville deserve no less. The city of Nashville deserves no less. Together, we can make it happen. That being said, it has been a difficult year. The amount allocated in the current year's budget was not enough to cover the increase in fixed costs. To fit within the allocation, the school system cut $15 million, including 111 positions from the previous year's budget. We are making do and expect to finish the year within our allocation, but it has been painful. Our employees did not receive a cost of living adjustment and did not receive the step increases called for in our published pay scale. Nevertheless, our teachers and staff have persisted. We have some tremendous triumphs at every school, every day. Our students' academic growth is outpacing the national average. The number of students pursuing CTE, college credit, and industry certification continues to rise. More students are earning a 21 on the ACT. Thanks to Council, we have continued to increase numbers of students who are taking and passing advanced certifications and advanced placement examinations. And the college acceptance and scholarships for class of 2019 are amazing. High school graduations start this weekend, I hope you will take the time to attend one. So let me turn back to the topic at hand, which is our 2020 budget. As you heard from Ms. Shepherd, our budget was built around priorities set by the School Board in line with what we have heard from you and your constituents. The budget proposal approved by the Board of Education on April 9th identifies and includes $5.3 million in savings and reductions and represents a modest investment in the critical areas of employee compensation, textbooks, technology, HR infrastructure, and social-emotional support for our students. We have provided you with a document that describes these investments. Here is why I believe they are the right ones. Decades of research tells us that to drive improvement in student outcomes, you need to focus on the instructional core. That's teachers, students, and content. I know this deeply from my own experiences as an MNPS student, teacher, school leader, principal supervisor, and now after a month in the role of Director of Schools. And so, this is what our proposed budget is about, directing resources to the instructional core. Let me recap the six Board-proposed budget priorities. Employee compensation. The district is committed to employee pay increases. MNPS staff would receive a 10% cost of living adjustment and a step increase under the budget proposal, the first adjustment since FY 2017-18. This increase is critical to helping staff keep up with their ever-rising cost of living in Nashville, recruiting and retaining great teachers. Textbooks. Students deserve access to relevant learning materials. This additional investment would help keep MNPS curriculum up to date. This budget focuses on science kits plus history and social studies texts. Hourly rate increase for bus drivers and monitors. The dedicated drivers and monitors of the MNPS school bus fleet deserve a higher hourly rate. They carry the city's most precious cargo through increasingly crowded streets. As elsewhere across the US, competition for bus drivers is stiff in the Nashville labor market. The district proposes to double the attendance bonus for drivers and introduce an attendance bonus for monitors. Human Resources and Finance Systems upgrades. MNPS is joining Metro Government in modernizing its human resources and finance systems. The school system expects to bring the new Oracle R12 system online in July 2019 and the Oracle Telayo Talent Management System in October. These systems will streamline HR, work, and speed the recruitment and hiring of MNPS staff, a critical need for our district. Student social and emotional learning supports. These dollars will fund specialists trained to address trauma and family needs, as well as staffing for 12 care centers at elementary schools with the highest absent rates and behavior challenges. The care centers will provide school-based alternatives to suspensions. Also, pre-kindergarten preservation. This highly successful program, which sets up Nashville's youngest students for academic success, is currently funded by federal grant sunsetting in December 2019. The district has planned for this day, however, and this year's budget proposal reflects the need to sustain the excellent work of its pre-K staff and their deserving students. While we know the dollars we have proposed are not quite enough, in a year of constrained resources, we are committed to working at the core. But without these necessary resources, we will struggle to meet our goal of providing the kind of educational opportunity that every one of our students deserve. We sincerely appreciate your support and we know you will study your options and do what you can to help us serve the children and families of Nashville. We also recognize that it's easier said than done. The recommended Metro Government budget filed by the Mayor would allocate $48.5 million less to Metro Schools than the April 9th budget approved by the School Board. I'm going to turn it over now to Chief Operating Officer, Chris Henson. He will walk us through the differences in the proposed allocations and the impact this will have on the School Board's priorities.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. You should have two documents in front of you. One is bound on the end, a multi-page document. The other is a front and back, which Dr. Battle just emphasized, the proposed budget priorities of the Board of Education. So I'll be referencing both of those. I'll first start with the bound document. This is the document that the Board of Education approved back on April 9th. If you turn to the first page, the page numbers are on the bottom right of each page. This page is what I will spend the vast majority of my time discussing with you this afternoon. This is intended to reflect a summary of the changes from the current year budget to the proposed budget that was approved by the Board of Education on April 9th. The top part of the document or of this page deals with employee compensation. You can see for our certificated employees, the proposal approved by the School Board is a salary step increase plus a 10% across-the-board cost-of-living adjustment salary schedule increase, both of those together totaling approximately $45 million. We have some modest reductions or savings in our insurance and pension that total savings of approximately $740,000. And then our support employees, the same salary step increase and a 10% cost-of-living adjustment salary schedule increase, those totaling approximately $13.6 million. Then we also recognize the fact that with as many employees as we have throughout the school district, we will have some vacancies and some turnover throughout the year, which means not all positions will be filled every day of the school year or of the fiscal year. So we are estimating a savings in vacancies and turnover during the year of $3 million. So for this document, the employee compensation, $54.8 million is the subtotal. In the middle of the page would be what we've historically called Required Additions Other. This reflects inflationary increases and other contract increases at approximately $2.2 million. As Dr. Battle indicated, and as you know, we are a part of Metro Government as far as our payroll, human resources, finance, and purchasing systems and we are converting to the Oracle R12 platform along with Metro Government. There are some requirements, three positions, two in IT and one in human resources that would be required, as well as non-personnel costs that are associated with that conversion to the R12 platform. Total cost of approximately $1.5 million that we have to do as we convert with Metro Government to Oracle R12. Also, as Dr. Battle indicated, we have a very successful pre-K program and we were able to expand that program through a federal, four-year federal pre-K expansion grant. That grant will end in December of 2019, so we will be able to continue with federal grant funding through the first half of the year, but we would need to sustain that program, which reflects 22 pre-K classrooms, as well as all of the staffing at the Cambridge Early Learning Center. This would be 25.5 positions for the pre-K program at a cost of approximately $1.4 million for that half year. And as we do every year, we have additional costs as it relates to the required transfer for our charter schools. We have a number of charter schools that continue to add grades and so therefore their enrollment continues to increase. State law requires that we transfer the state and local revenue per pupil amount to each charter school based upon their actual enrollment. And we have, as I indicated earlier, we have enrollment increases in our charter schools as well as a per pupil rate increase. That per pupil rate is calculated by the Tennessee Department of Education and that is the state and local revenue per pupil amount. That is included in our budget and then is trued up with actual costs, actual revenue figures at the end of the fiscal year. That is almost $9 million for the transfer to our charter schools. So we have, in this proposal, approximately $14.1 million in Required Additions in addition to the proposal or request as it relates to employee compensation. And then at the bottom part of the page, of the summary page, we have other proposed changes, many of which Dr. Battle just mentioned. These dollar amounts include both personnel costs as well as non-personnel costs and so it's not necessarily the cost of the positions that are indicated because there are also additional non-personnel costs associated with these. The first one is that the Board of Education had looked into entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Metro Office of Internal Audit to have two Metro Internal Audit staffers located onsite at the Board of Education building that would be constantly reviewing and looking at certain aspects of the organization. That estimated cost that we received from the Office of Internal Audit was $230,000. We also have three additional positions in our human resources area, two talent acquisition partners, which are basically teacher recruiters, as well as an additional employee relations manager to keep up with the backlog of employee investigations that we have. That is three personnel at a cost which again would include non-personnel costs of approximately $250,000. We also have an increase in our IT area of request of four additional positions, as well as some additional dollars. The IT and HR areas, the infrastructure, those were two of the areas that the Board identified as budget priorities to strengthen our human resources and IT infrastructure. We also have included an additional $2.7 million for textbooks. This was pared down from the original request for textbooks. This, as Dr. Battle mentioned, would focus on hands-on science kits, social studies, and history. We also are proposing to add four additional workdays to our paraprofessionals at a cost of $850,000, which would allow them to receive the same professional development opportunities as the exceptional education teachers receive. We've included $350,000 here for the individual learning plan software that's being required by the Tennessee Department of Education for our English learners. We've included four additional positions, four additional teaching positions, as we add an additional grade at our early college program, which is housed at Nashville State Community College. We have additional personnel in our social and emotional learning area. This also includes, in addition to some trauma-informed specialists and family involvement and family engagement specialists, this also includes 12 care centers at our most challenging elementary schools, which would go to help those schools deal with some of the disciplinary issues that we've been seeing at a cost of approximately $1.4 million. We've included three positions in the translation services area for translators, additional translators, and as Dr. Battle mentioned, a proposal to increase the hourly rate for our bus drivers and our bus monitors by a dollar per hour, as well as to enhance the attendance bonus for drivers and to institute an attendance bonus for our bus monitors at a cost of approximately $2.1 million. The Board also approved the reduction of 11 non-school-based positions at a savings of approximately $1 million. And then we have various changes throughout the budget document that reflect a reduction of about $225,000. The positions, three of the positions that are reflected here are adding a dean at each of our three special education centers, as well as an additional bus driver supervisor that's needed. So, looking at the overall budget summary, the request is to increase the number of personnel by 54.5 positions with an increase of $76.66 million, which reflects an 8.6% increase over the current year. We also have a series of other documents behind this page, which I won't go into detail, but would be glad to if anyone has any particular questions. I'll just mention document number two. Document number two, as we always do, reflects any changes in numbers of positions. At the top part of the page would be the positions that are being reduced. The bottom part of the page would be the positions that are proposed to be added and you can see what those are as far as a position title, as well as which account number where you could find those and the account name. Each of the costs that are represented here for the positions also include benefits. It's not just the salary cost, but it also includes benefits for the full position cost. And as you can see at the bottom of the page, the same 54.5 net increase in the request. We also have a very detailed line item budget, which begins over on page nine. It's a 29-page document that goes into a lot of detail as it relates to the different budget codes and accounts that we have and the different object codes that exist within those budget accounts. And again, happy to discuss if anyone has any particular question about that particular document. Then over on page 41, we have some information regarding our separate Nutrition Services Fund. This is a self-supporting enterprise fund that is mainly funded by federal USDA reimbursements. And then the last thing that I'll mention would be on page 46, we have a separate fund for our federal programs and grants. As you know or may know, the federal fiscal year runs October 1st to September 30th and so these are very preliminary numbers. These are all flow-through dollars on a reimbursement basis and so the district spends the money first and then requests reimbursement from the Tennessee Department of Education. Obviously, there are no local tax dollars involved in federal programs and grants. It's flow-through money and then many times can be very prescriptive regarding how those funds can be spent. So with that, I'll be glad to try to answer any questions that anyone may have regarding the proposal that the Board of Education has approved.
Thank you so much, Mr. Henson. Committee Members and Council Members, Budget and Finance Committee Members will be recognized first and then Council Members, you'll be recognized in the order that you hit your queue. Councilman Pulli.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for your detailed analysis and presentation to us. Dr. Battle, we appreciate you stepping into this and appreciate your words and walking us through how we got here and we all stand ready to support you however we can. And we all believe very strongly in a strong education system in Metro Nashville. I think I can speak for everybody on the Council. We are definitely presented with some challenges, as you well know, and I just have a couple of brief questions. I know my colleagues will have plenty more. First of all, I want to get to funding and when I look at, I looked at analysis that dated back to 2012 and it looks like our budget, the school budget, continues to increase every year, but when I look at our contribution from our brethren at the state, that is pretty much flat and does not increase with the amount of money that we are paying into increasing the school budget every year. So, Mr. Henson, can you explain to us a little bit about that because it does really put a strain on the city to continue to fund the difference there?
Sure, and thank you for asking that question. The state funds education in Tennessee by a formula called the Basic Education Program or BEP Funding Formula. It's a true funding formula, not a spending plan. It's not prescriptive in how the funds are spent. As far as the effect that it's had on Davidson County, you're accurate in your assessment. The funding through the state BEP Funding Formula is very heavily influenced and driven by something called the Fiscal Capacity Index. Fiscal capacity basically means the ability to fund education from your own local sources, i.e. property taxes or local option sales taxes. Therefore, the Fiscal Capacity Index is very heavily driven by assessed property values and by retail sales tax base. And so, based upon the state's calculation, the fiscal capacity for Davidson County has been increasing significantly over the last several years based upon those two factors, assessed property values and retail sales tax base. And so therefore, even though a large amount of additional state funding has been going into the BEP, we have not been seeing those big increases in Davidson County because Davidson County's Fiscal Capacity Index continues to significantly increase. And so, it is true that the state has put more money into education, more money into K-12 education, but that doesn't mean that it's seen by everyone, particularly Davidson County, and it's mainly been because of the increase in their Fiscal Capacity Index calculation.
So, when the contribution from the state remains flat and our budget increases every year, then their percentage as a contribution to this in terms of revenue decreases every year as a result, is that correct?
That's correct. Our current percentage of funding from the state, when you look at all funding sources, is approximately 29% of our total funding. 12% from the federal government, the rest from local sources.
And the rest falls on Metro's shoulder to make up the difference?
That's correct.
Okay. I have one other question. I want to talk about your budgeting process now. I want to talk about your budgeting process now. Just to help me clearly understand this. Does the administration submit a budget to the school board?
Yes, there is a budget that is proposed by the administration, led, of course, by the Director of Schools, that in this year was submitted to the Board of Education on March 5. And then at that point, it becomes the Board of Education's budget through their Budget and Finance Committee, and then ultimately up to the Board of Education to approve the budget that would be submitted to the mayor.
Okay. And the budget that the school board ultimately submitted is different than the one that you submitted to the school board? Is that correct?
It's different than the one that Dr. Joseph and the administration submitted to the school board on March 5. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And so I guess I would ask the Budget Chair this question. So, when you submit, when you guys meet and your committee, which I think is the whole school board, makes adjustments to the budget that's been put before you, are you required to bring the revenue sources along with that to support the numbers that you add?
No. Mostly what we do is we have weekly, after we're presented with the initial budget, then the Committee Chair will schedule, usually their weekly meetings. Every week, we'll have a meeting to rework the budget and bring our priorities into the budget. When we got our initial budget this year, it had just a 3% raise with no step increase and nothing for the bus, I don't think there was anything for the bus drivers either. And so we decided, we had already expressed that our number-one primary priority was compensation. So we went back to work to rework and work into that budget our priorities.
Right. And I completely agree with you. I listened to what you said in your remarks, and I think everyone in here does agree with the same thing. We were presented with a much different challenge, though. But to be clear, you, your priorities, which are very good, do not necessarily have to be accompanied by a revenue source to fund those priorities. Is that right?
That is true.
Okay. And that is where we have the different challenge. I wish we could pay him 20%, like you do too, because I completely agree with the priority. So, anyway, Madam Chair, that's it for me. I'll leave the rest to my colleagues.
That's a great question, Councilman Pulley. Councilwoman Weiner.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. Before I ask the question of y'all, and I want to thank you for being here, and the information that you've shared is just so, so important. And because of that, Chair, I'm going to ask a question. Because this is so detailed and because we just got it, would there be a possibility that this committee can reconvene with the Board after we've had a chance to go through this? Because this isn't anything that we should be taken lightly. We've got our kids, we've got our teachers, we've got our families at stake. It's a big decision, and I was just hoping that we could reconvene again, I mean certainly go through what we're doing today, but have an opportunity for us to really dig into this and see how we can try to make this right.
Councilwoman Weiner, I'm not going to be able to provide you an answer with that. We already have an aggressive budget timeline. I will have to get with council staff to see if we can fit that in between the next council meeting. We got my budget work session coming up. We have some other meetings coming up, too, that was announced yesterday in committee, and I didn't bring that with me today. But if that's the pleasure of the committee, I'll get with council staff to see if we can make that happen. What that means is that the next couple of weeks, you're potentially looking at meeting every day.
Like I said, this is a big deal. It's too important. So I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, Councilwoman Weiner, we all know it's a big deal.
I understand that.
They have a billion-dollar budget, half our budget. We know it's a big deal. I want to make sure that the committee members and the council members understand the commitment if I move forward with scheduling another meeting for us to convene, that all of us are here in attendance. I don't want the Board of Education coming, and we only have six council members present.
I absolutely appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Weiner.
I had another question.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I've asked this of several other departments, so I'm just going to throw it out for y'all as well. Tell me a little bit about what your grant research group looks like within metro schools? How many have you got? How aggressive is it?
The grant, we don't really have a grant research group. We do have, within our Federal Programs and Grants office, we do have some positions that assist in grant writing. But usually those grants are driven, or I guess driven by different areas where there's particular emphasis, but we don't have a true grant research area within our organization.
Would that be something that would be helpful?
Sure, it would. And we look for as many grants as we possibly can find, but it, as you probably know, takes a lot of time to research grants and to actually write the grants. And so that would be something that, yes, we would like to have.
So that's definitely an opportunity that we should look at?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have, Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Weiner. Councilman Cooper.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Chris and Dr. Battle and the Chair of the Budget Committee. Couple of quick questions. The administration proposal for the school's budget of $28.1 million, you then have a deduction of that amount for the TIF loan, which is about 10% of the total. So out of the school's budget is another deduction of, just making sure I'm understanding this correctly, of $2.7 million. So that the school's budget ends up going to fund the sort of development loans made by MDHA? That is right?
That's correct. We were notified that within that $28.2 million increase, there would be, as you indicated, a $2.7 million increase to our expense for the MDHA tax increment, which means we have a net increase of $25.5 million.
Brilliant. And then another question. If schools were to have a step increase similar to the one proposed to the other metro employees, what would that cost be?
And if you look at the one pager on the top of the, where it says FY 1920 Budget Proposals, a step increase would equate to $8 million. And then each 1% cost-of-living raise is $5 million.
And that would be an equivalent step increase to the one that's going to the metro employees under the current proposal?
That's correct. And I'll just add that I don't think we included it on here, but if we were to bring all of our employees up to the $15 per hour floor, that would affect over 1,600 employees within metro schools and have a cost of $5.2 million.
And that would be $5.2 million if a similar policy happened to the schools that is happening to the rest of the government?
That's correct.
Okay. I appreciate it. And a final question, always important, but just wanted to make sure. Last year, of course, healthcare premiums went up for teachers, and that really caused a net decrease in pay. Is there certainty that that's not going to happen again this year?
There is. The Employee Insurance Trust, which is made up of three school board members and three MNEA representatives, they have already voted on the budget, and there was an actual slight decrease. It wasn't in the health insurance, it was in the basic life insurance reflected on page number one of $200,000. So there will not be any increase in the medical insurance for any of our employees for next year.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Cooper. Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Chair. Few comments and a couple of questions, perhaps. First, welcome Dr. Battle to us down here at Budget. Great to have a fellow MNPS grad in that seat now, and appreciate having you here. And I know this first budget's probably not an easy one for you, but great to have you with us. First, just wanted to say, also, it's very impressive of all the teachers, and want to acknowledge the teachers and support staff we have here and families and parents. It's really impressive that we have this many folks that care about our kids and our schools. I think this goes to the heart of everything. We've been, it's been happening since last year, since we didn't fully fund as much as we could the MNPS and overall budget. We've just had a lot of tension this year, you know, after all this, and it's just literally affected everything. I think it's had a dramatic effect on the ground in the schools. I know I had, you know, I deal with the Stratford Cluster a lot, went to visit with Mr. Steele recently, Dr. Steele, I should say, recently, and, you know, he really wanted to make a plea to us about the budget and just how it's affecting them on the ground. So, you know, if you're in the schools, you see, you hear from the administrators and the teachers how it's affecting them. First, I want to, next, I want to talk about your priorities you've laid out here. I think they're great, one through six. I say yes, yes, and yes. I think you've laid out really good priorities. Of course, the employees, first and foremost. Our teachers have been pushed around so much, and we ask so much out of them, you know, over these last few years. The state hasn't helped us at all with the BEP formulas we've talked about, and we just, you know, it's time to make it right for them any way we can. It's time to make it right for the teachers and the support staff. So, thank you for employee compensation and putting this out there. The textbooks, I remember this from the big state of schools, you had, it was interesting to me that we haven't had what we need there. Just being in MNPS in the '90s, we always had textbooks. It never was an issue, so that has been a surprise, and I think that's just such a no-brainer. You know, a lot of schools, they have more resources, you know, everybody's got an iPad and a textbook and everything else they could possibly need. We have to do this level for our students in the district. We just have to. It's what we grew up with, and it's what we expect for our kids today. My kid, speaking of, is going to Rosebank next year. I can't wait to send her there, and we expect to have textbooks for her throughout her career in MNPS. The bus drivers, you know, hourly rate, you know, we've had some issues in like Chattanooga and things like that. Like, we want to make sure the people driving our kids are happy. If they're not happy driving our children on the roads, we have a serious problem. And so we just have to continue to compensate. That's all we're saying, and hopefully they're happy today, but make them, you know, continue to have the compensation that they expect and deserve. And again, these other, you know, pre-K we talk about every year, we need to continue to grow. And again, basically, all I'm saying in totality there is these priorities you've laid out are great, and I think you have a good direction with the increase in funding that you're asking for. Of course, most of that being with the employees. I am getting to questions at some point. Sorry, Chair.
Come on, Councilman Davis.
I did want to ask you.
Remember, we have two other, we have some nonprofits that's coming behind the Board of Education, too.
Okay, gotcha.
And you have a slew of council members that's in the queue also.
Okay.
So if we can keep the question to the operator, yes.
Wanted to ask about those auditors that you had, Chris. I think that's a great idea, and just kind of where did that come from? Also was wondering if they could, on occasion, maybe report back to us or anything that you have with those guys.
Sure, and it would, you know, we could look at including that in the memorandum of understanding. The discussion was, and just to make it clear, we're audited every year, just like metro government is audited every year by an independent CPA firm currently, Crosland. And then we're also subject to audit from the Metro Office of Internal Audit, which we've had, a number of audits have been performed. And the Board of Education felt like it would be helpful to them if we were to have two auditors on-site that were independent of the school district, but that were on-site, boots on the ground, where if any particular board member had a concern, they could look into it, or they could just have, you know, a work schedule to look at certain aspects of the organization throughout the year. And so that was something brought forth by the Board. It wasn't something necessarily included in the administration's proposal, but brought forth by the Board to sort of supplement the external audit that we receive every year, as well as any other audits that Metro Office of Internal Audit might perform. We're also audited by the Tennessee Department of Education on certain programs. So we're being audited quite a bit, but this would be two individuals that would be on-site, full-time, working with the Board of Education and with the administration at the district headquarters.
Cool. I wanted to highlight it because you had a long list of those kind of things, and that sounds like boots on the ground. It will help with sort of real-time, you know, evaluations. Are there any plans to add any more charter schools? I know we've got, we're adding the kids in the grades that we have. Is there anything on the horizon of adding any schools?
No, there is one new one opening this year that was approved by the State Board of Education. The new KIPP school. But the Board of Education hasn't approved any new charter schools in several years. I believe that vote will come to the Board for 2020 at the end of the second meeting in June for this latest round of applications, but the Board of Education hasn't approved any new charter schools in several years.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think that's the direction we want to continue, and we understand we have to grow inside the ones we have. We grew a lot over those years, but obviously that has cost a fair amount of money, so let's just keep on the path we're on. Also, we'll add contracts if we can keep analyzing any contracts and just, you know, ensuring that we've got the best partnerships, contracts out there, and we cut anything that we absolutely do not need, if at all possible. In final, Chair, I just want to say, I know, you know, you guys, MNPS, you're asking for a lot, but wouldn't it be great if these teachers and employees could go back to their jobs and their school in the fall and be very excited about where they're at with their lives and if we're able to at least compensate them? So, and just be more excited about teaching our kids into the future. We just need, here, we need to do everything we can to try and make that happen, and I commit to that. We're going to do everything we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Chair. So I want to try and make sure I do stay on questions. I have one or two brief comments, probably with the questions, just for kind of get a feel back. First of all, I think Councilman Pulley, the initial questions he was asking were good. I have to agree with Council Lady Weiner. I don't think it's a bad idea for us to reconvene and talk about this. We used to always do. I think, Mr. Henson, and here's my first question. I believe, if I remember correctly, Board of Education was always the last meeting we did with the Budget Committee as we were kind of concluding the city's budget. And we changed that a year or two ago, I'm not sure why, but I think that's the way it used to be. Am I remembering that correctly?
I believe you are. We have been the last budget hearing with the council a number of years. I don't remember when that changed or if it was every year, but we're typically closer to the end, as we are with the mayor's budget hearing.
Okay, well, I mean, given the magnitude of the overall budget, I think it's probably a good idea. If we're looking at trying to increase funding, and I understand where the other departments are, where we're able to hear that, and we have a full, we have a full concept of where the overall budget is as a whole. All right, that being said, all right, I want to go back to the $15 per hour very quickly, Mr. Henson. You said, I believe, if you equalized what the mayor has proposed for metro employees outside of schools, to equalize a $15 per hour, the cost would be $5.2 million? Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct. $5.2, I think it's $5.22 million.
$2.2.
And it would affect, I think, 1,656 employees, and that would not count substitutes or, of course, board members.
Say that, the 1,000 number again?
1,656 employees.
Okay.
Currently make less than $15 per hour.
Okay.
And the cost to bring them up to that $15 per hour floor would be $5.22 million.
Okay, and then the step raises, Madam Chair, on the Budget and Finance. The $8 million being shown here, the $8 million would accommodate the full steps as we're doing in the metro budget this year?
Yes.
Okay, no, that would not be an additional cost. That is just what the actual step would be.
That is correct.
Okay, and, Mr. Henson, I'm almost certain I know the answer to this as well, but I want to confirm it. $5 million for each 1%. So in other words, I'm going to use this as an example to where I make sure I understand how all the numbers are working. If we were able to say, and I want to underline if, we're able to say, we're going to try and provide 2% plus the 15 per hour plus the steps, then we would need to add another $10 million, because the 1% is over and above where you are now. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Are you saying a 2% over?
Over and above the 3.
The 3?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, each percentage is $5 million.
$5 million.
And so the 2% would be $10 million, the step would be $8 million, and then the $15 would be $5.2.
Right, and that's why I was trying to make sure I separated it out to where I kind of understood that, okay, well, if we did a 5% or if we tried to figure out a 5%, would it recalculate the steps or anything else? But I didn't think it would, but I'd prefer to ask the question and just make sure. Okay. So each one, so, okay?
So in total, that would be, and I'm sure calculated this already, $23.2 million.
Now, you know, Mr. Henson, I would never do such things. Now, you know, Mr. Henson, I would never do such things. All right, so-
I wanted to make sure I said it.
Yeah, you've been around me a long time. Okay, so, when we look, and the, the original budget that was presented, Madam Chair, the original budget that was presented had the 3% in it. One of the things that bothered me from the very beginning, and one of the things that scared me from the very beginning, is when that comes out and then we get the, the mayor's budget, it makes it very challenging in order to get several of us on this floor to do the things that, that are now being asked by the Board for us to move it to a 10% for the teachers. And, and look, I, I think I've been very clear on what I've been fighting over the last year and what I believe in. And so, when you looked at cuts that could be done, and I understand we say $15 million cuts, and I mean, we kind of played some games with some of the numbers and everything. Outside of the classroom, what aspects were looked at cutting in order to try and accommodate every penny possible to do the step increases and/or the $15 per hour, or any other pieces of this puzzle? What other departments were looked into as far as what could be done from a management standpoint that would not touch the classrooms, that would keep the money in the classrooms? What, what steps were, were considered and discussed in order to try and accommodate as much of that money as possible?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, those cuts are listed at the top of page two. And those are non-classroom positions.
Mm-hmm.
And we also, through our budget development process, the first thing we look at is where can we make reductions, where can we make cuts?
Right.
And as Dr. Battle mentioned, making the current year budget balance with the $7 million additional funding that we received with $22 million in fixed costs required us to cut $15 million in the current year budget from the previous year. That was a, obviously, a big part of that process, where we went back and, and we looked at every single line item. We cut 111 positions, we cut between $3 and $4 million in contracted services costs, we cut almost $1 million in travel costs. So, we had, we had already gone through that budget-cutting reduction process to reduce that $15 million in the current year budget. And then, as we began to develop the, the next year's budget proposal, we went back through to see where else we could make reductions. And as Ms. Shepherd indicated, we, we did reduce 11 non-school-based positions, as well as some other reductions throughout the budget in various line items. And so, that's one of the first things that we do as we develop the proposal.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henson. So, so I'm going to reemphasize, I believe what Council Lady Weiner asked, that we reconvene to talk this through a little better, to where we can take this information, digest it, and, you know, get it, if we want to pick up and call our school board member, do what we feel like we need to do in order to, to fully comprehend the numbers. I think it might be a good idea, and I'm willing to do whatever. I realize I haven't been here for a couple of days. I was scheduled months ago to be out of town on my, my day job, but, you know, I'll be here for, for the remainder of these. And so, you know, I want to do whatever I can do, and I'll close with this. I'm fully committed, as I was last year, to making sure that not only do we fund the employees of the school system, but also the employees of Metro Nashville, because let's face it, when the issues occur, when things need to be dealt with, they're at the front line, no matter what. Be it a child in a classroom, be it a water main that burst, be it a, a 911 call, they are the front line that we have to fund. And frankly, we've done a pretty lousy job of it over the last several years. So, I'm committed. I mean, if other council members are committed to, to working on this, I'm, I'm full in. So, I hope we do reconvene. I do hope that we continue talking about this, because I believe that it's that important. And I understand that it's a great deal of our budget. It's easy for us to say the state hasn't done this, and, and a lot of simple answers, but it's time that we roll our sleeves up and we, we come up with some, some real answers, because we have real challenges. And I think it's, it's that important that we spend that amount of time to determine what the priorities truly are in this city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Glover. Councilwoman Dow.
Thank you. I appreciate that speech, Councilman Glover. When we press the button to vote, I want to make sure we replay that first, so we-
Councilwoman Dow, address the chair.
Understand that, and I'm going to address the chair now, but I think too often, we have a lot of lip language, and we don't actually put, you know, put what we say as priority a lot of times. And I do agree with Council Lady Weiner. I would love to sit down and have an in-depth conversation and digest this budget. I've looked at eight years, so I'm going to keep my questions short. Well, eight plus three years on the Report Card Committee, if you count that. But I did have a couple of questions. One is about the care centers. Are you able to tell me a little bit about what the care centers are, and is that something additional that we're doing to what we currently have in place already?
Um, yes, so, part of the discussion around the care centers, we convened a discipline task force earlier in the year to look at some of the challenges we were experiencing in many of our elementary schools. And so, the goal here is to train specialists to, to deal with the trauma and some of the adverse childhood experiences that our students have experienced prior to school and while they're with us in MMPS. And so, the goal there is to have trained specialists in 12 of the different elementary schools. They were identified and prioritized based upon need going into the next academic year.
So, each, so each school would have one person with that specialty located in the school, or one resource within the school with that specialty?
Correct.
Okay, do they differ from a guidance counselor some kind of way? Is it like a social worker? I'm just trying to understand what type of resource that is.
Yes, they would receive specialized training.
Okay.
Yes.
What about on the, so is that an additional 12 resources that we're going, you're proposing? Is that right, for the care centers?
That's correct.
Okay, so on the, and then go back to the pre-K. I heard you say something about we're losing some type of federal funding for the pre-K, and that the city is going to have to make up the difference in that to continue to have it. You spoke about Cambridge Early Learning Center. I didn't catch all of that. Are you able to elaborate a little on that?
Sure. Yes, we've had a four-year pre-K, federal pre-K expansion grant that has funded 22 classrooms, as well as provided all of the funding for the Cambridge Early Learning Center out in Antioch area. And that, that grant will be sunsetting at the end of the calendar year of 2019, so we'll continue to have those grant funds through the first half of the year. But to continue the program and to continue those 22 classrooms, we would need to find additional funding to sustain those, and the half-year cost for that is $1.4 million.
Is there any opportunity to reapply or get the grant again, or is it just a grant that was just for four years? And so, I'm just trying to figure out, is there ever going to be another resource for funding that through grants?
When there was a change in administration in Washington, then that grant opportunity went away. And so, we continue to look for additional opportunities for grant funding for pre-K, but that's, that particular grant no longer exists.
So, how does this impact the other pre-K programs we offer through our school system? Is that something that, down the pipeline, we're going to have to look at, how we're going to fund the pre-K programs?
No, it mainly affects those 22 classrooms that we were able to add, and then the Cambridge Early Learning Center. There are all, there are also some professional development that has been offered through this federal grant, some of which we would continue, but it's mainly just the, the expansion, the new classrooms, and then the, the Cambridge Early Learning Center that would be affected.
Okay, so the other pre-K programs are not at jeopardy with regard to funding?
Right.
And we're funding those with federal grants as well as local funding?
It's mainly state, there's a state voluntary pre-K grant that funds, I think, 55 of those classrooms, and the remainder are funded with local funds.
Okay. Is there any reason why the Cambridge Early Learning Center couldn't be part of that?
The State Department of Education has said that would be supplanting if, if, if they were to use their voluntary pre-K grant to supplant a federal grant, and that, we had, we had asked that question, and, and that would not be allowed from the State Department.
Okay. One other thing I would like to have is, is there any way you can send me like an org chart per school? I know one of the things that the neighbors come up with when we talk about school funding often is the number of administrative people per school, and that's one of the areas I hear all the time, when they say, well, you advocate for school, but one of the ways that we see that we can generate some cost savings is not have so many administrators and have more people on the ground in the classroom providing direct education to the child. Because what I hear every time we have a conversation is that people in the administrative level are making a significant amount of money, and all the people, you know, they say, just like we worker bees, we're doing the work, we're getting just a little bit of money. So, the, the teachers who are directly in the classroom involved with learning make significantly less than the people who are administrating. They said they have so many principals, assistant principal, area principal, administrative principal, eighth grade principal. And so, I would just like to see a breakdown of the org chart per school, to see if we can look at how all the schools are organized and how that administration work. And I think it'll be helpful for the community and people to understand what the roles of all those people are, and what their impact is with regard to student learning. I think that would help tremendously. So if you could provide that, and we could put it out on our SharePoint, so we can take a look at it.
I will say that all of the schools, their, how they allocate their funding, that is a school-based decision. So each school, with their teachers and with the community partners, determine how they want to budget and spend, the allocation they receive through their student-based budgeting, funding. And so, all of those decisions are made at the school level, and I don't know, Dr. Battle, if you want to add anymore to that, but, you know, we've got over 130 schools that use student-based budgeting. Did you want to, did you want to see that for all 130, or just some specific schools?
I'm most interested in is just, you know, if you have just a org chart, for example, if it's an executive principal and assistant principal at the school, or if it's, you know, not necessarily, maybe, I have one that lists the teachers, but I'm more interested in the administrative staff at each school. So I, it doesn't have to be in, you know, detail about their student-based budgeting, but for example, if an elementary school has four principals, that's something we want to see, like, what, how many, you know, principals, administrative staff for each school?
Yeah, and, and again, those, we can, we can share that with you, and those-
Okay.
Those decisions are made at the school level, but there is a budget approval process where the school and the school team come and present their budget and provide rationale for that to a team from the district office, including the community superintendent. And so, I don't know, Dr. Battle, if you want to discuss that process any further, but there is a, a second look, or more than, than two looks regarding, okay, how much do you have in administration? What does your school improvement plan say you need to, where you need to make improvements, your goals and objectives of your school? All of those questions are asked and vetted through that budget approval process, but I'll see if Dr. Battle wants to add to that.
No, I don't have anything in addition to, in addition to add. That is the process. Schools generate their budgets based upon their needs. It should always include teacher input, administrative input, community input as well. There is a process by which the principals administration presents their budgets to their supporting team at central office, which does include their direct supervisor, their executive director, and community superintendent. We are looking for, they do receive guidance around what is required as far as positions regarding executive principal, assistant principals, and such. And so, there is a deep dive look at additional positions beyond that. That is probably something we can pull together outside of an org chart, but looking at the numbers that exist between executive principals, assistant principals, deans, and such, that's something that we could definitely pull together.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I'd be interested in, and also, like, the area superintendents. I've been looking at some of the other large urban school system and how they are modeled as far as like how, and I know every school system is different, I know every school is different based upon their population, but I think I've had some conversations with other school districts and looking at how they, what their administrative staff look like. And one of the things that I see in comparison to other urban school districts is metro is a little top-heavy. And, and I don't know if it's valid or not, but I see a lot of administrative staff with regard to the teachers. And I see a lot, when you look at your budget, and, and I'm a finance person, as Chris knows this, but when I look at our budget and look at some of the other urban school district budget, and I look at where the top dollars are, it seems like a significant amount of money is up at the administrative level, and it's, it's not really comparative, in a sense, to what's at the teacher level. And when we talk about, you know, priorities, I think, you know, this council needs to focus on priorities, but also the school. If textbooks is the priority, you know, we budget based upon that. So, you know, some of the things that the school is doing, I mean, I appreciate some of the cuts that's been made, but it would be great, like Councilman Weiner said, if we could sit down here and look at some of these programs, some of these consulting contracts, and some of these other things that we're doing at the school, and really focus on what's working and how to best utilize the dollars we have. I think the sentiment is people want to fund schools, but I think people do not really understand all the intricacies about the school system and everything we're doing. And I've asked for this in the past, and Chris has heard me mention this, is that it would be nice if our budget, instead of coming like this operating budget together, if we could just break out like teachers and education and classrooms, all of these other programs and grants, transportation, have some of these things broken out, where we can really get a deep dive look at what is being utilized and spent with the teacher and the student in the classroom setting. And that's what I've tried for the last eight years, to really isolate, and it's, we always get, you know, this person, that person, and it's really a lot, but I think one of the things, we are interested in supporting teachers. We want to see them get compensated fairly, but somewhere in all of these numbers and details, we, we miss out on that, because we're doing a lot of things extra besides just directly having a teacher educate a child, you know, with the, the care centers and all of these other things. And I think what will help, if we could put all of those things on a separate budget, and then have the teacher and the classroom, the textbooks, the capital expenditures with the building and, and the overhead in another budget, you know, all the other ancillary things, the healthcare, the nursing, the transportation, the nutrition, all of that on one side of the equation. And then the other side, a budget to just really streamline, looking at what it costs for salaries for the teachers, the capital expenses for the building, the textbooks and all of those things, so we can just see, these are the things that we're doing that's extra, these are the things that we're doing that's directly with the teacher engaging a student. But thank you for coming, and I appreciate you bringing this. That's all of my questions.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Dow. And so that, committee members and council members, you can go ahead and put this date on your calendar, May 29th at 5:00 PM. We'll be meeting with the Board of Education again. I know some of you council members, there is a Public Works meeting that same day at 4:00, but looking at the date, that's the only available date. Also, I want to remind you, that's the week that your wish list needs to be due, submitted to council staff also. Councilman Mendez.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I was about to express not, not having an interest in another meeting, and I guess I'll make my comment, but I'm going to wrap it up with, can we at least tell the Board of Education members that they don't need to come again? And my, my pitch for that is, I mean, honestly, with just a couple of pages here, we know pretty much everything we need to know.
Councilman Mendez, the request from the committee member was to convene jointly with the Board.
Okay, well, my view is that maybe then we should have a process so they can know what they're supposed to talk about, because what I've heard today is that every, every 1% of increase for certificated employees is 5 million, every 1% of increase for support employees is 1.3 million, there's another 7.7 worth of suggested non-employee changes, and that they've cut, frozen, squeezed until it hurts, and the couch cushions have all been shaken out. And so, if they're going to come back, I don't, I don't know what other questions we're going to have for them, but maybe we could at least set a deadline for council members to propose questions, so they, they know what they're supposed to talk about. I think we pretty much know what the choices are, and no amount of information from them I would submit is going to convince us more that they've cut everything that needs to be cut, or could possibly be cut, or, or squeeze any harder. So, I'll leave it at that. I think we should at least let them know what they're coming back to talk about.
That's duly noted. We'll do that, Councilman Mendez, a great suggestion. I think the intent is to give council members time to comb through their budget like, unlike other years, and then we'll just go from there. Councilmember Murphy.
Thank you, Chair. So I've got a couple of clarification questions about the BEP funding. You explained very well about the fiscal capacity index and how the state determines what they feel that we can give in BEP funding. And I know BEP is extremely complicated, but it kind of, does it, is it fair to say that it boils down to that we get a lump sum amount based on per child, day in school, that type of thing? That, that's, that's what calculates the total bucket they give us? Is that right?
Well, there are, there are 46 different components in the formula in three different categories, and it's- categories, and it's heavily driven by student enrollment and heavily driven by the different types of students that are enrolled, but there are also a, a number of other components based, based on other things, but heavily driven by student enrollment and by the types of students that are enrolled. But yes, it is a lump sum amount and then it's included as, as far as our revenue sources and we provide that estimate to the finance department. As soon as we get it from the Tennessee Department of Education, we receive our first estimate in mid-April, which we did receive and relayed that on. But it's, it's, it is very difficult to comprehend and, and complex and probably only the, only individuals at the Department of Education would have a real thorough knowledge of it because they, they work with it daily.
Right. And so one of the things, remind me, last, was it last year or going into this year, we forecasted our students wrong? We, we thought we were gonna have more kids than we did and so that was one of the reasons we got less money than we expected in the budget projection?
Yeah, that was last year where we had, based upon 15 years of enrollment growth, we had projected enrollment growth and projected that we would receive what's called BEP growth money from the state. We didn't grow, we actually had a slight decrease in enrollment and so we didn't receive any of that BEP growth money. We did not project any BEP growth money for the current year or for the next year as we are projected that overall enrollment basically will be flat.
Okay, cuz obviously that's one of the, I think that's one of the things that shocked us last year was that we had calculated incorrectly how many students. And so I noticed in here that you had do, or it appears on page two that you're cutting a forecast, enrollment forecasting, is that, would that be the person who would be, I hate to use my own, my own terms to understand this, but the person who, who calculates how many kids we're gonna have?
Actually, that's through a reorganization and we were able to reduce a position through some reorganization between what previously was called Student Assignment Services and then what's called our School Choice Office. Through that reorganization, we were able to squeeze out or reduce one position, but we still have the same individual doing that forecasting that, that works very closely with the Metro Planning Department, actually used to be employed by the Metro Planning Department, doing the student projections.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't getting rid of a position that we then end up continuing to miscount our students. So one of the concerns that I have is there are a lot of, I, I appreciate y'all kinda giving us like a list of menus and, and of menu items and how much they would cost for us to add into your budget if we're able to find the money, because obviously we want to find the money for all of these things. And so one of my concerns is that we, we are able to find some of the money for some of these things, but not all the money for all of things. And, and my concern is a priority for me is obviously paying our teachers. I was shocked to find out that the 10% number was kind of what, what y'all feel they need, what we feel they need, what they feel they need. I'm shocked that we kinda got to this point. I think in one of the emails that we received from one of the teachers and I asked for this to be broken down through our office to kind of show me how that happened was how many years they've gone without the pay increases. And so I guess as one elected official to, to another is, let's not let this happen again, that we have years go by, even recession or not recession, that we're not bringing up that conversation, because I was really surprised that we're 10% behind. So another concern of mine too, kind of elected official to elected official is, here's an email that I got from, from one of our state senators and I independently trained, you know, verified this with, with the state representative as well. So obviously they, they give you a bucket of money, we give you a bucket of money, what you do with that money is, is up to what the school board ultimately doles out. And so what, when I asked for clarification, because being at the state, I kept hearing, oh, we're, we're increasing teacher salaries, we're increasing teacher salaries. And I understand that our number has gone down of BEP funding because of this fiscal capacity index. But my concern is, is so here's the quote from, from the legislator I spoke to is, "There was money in the budget that was enough for a 2.5% funding increase for schools and the BEP system for salary increases with the intent that it be put towards teacher increases." Despite that intent, it is up to the districts to determine who actually gets the money. So hypothetically, it could all go to administrators and teacher, and teachers might not see any of that. So one of my concerns is, is one of the fellow council members brought up is, we do seem to be very top-heavy with top-heavy salaries and a number of top-heavy, or just a lot of administrators at the top. One of my concerns is, is that we pass a budget along to y'all, we find money, we put it in the budget and then it doesn't actually get passed along to, to the teachers for the raises that they deserve and they need. And so I think maybe between now and, and I appreciate that we're gonna have another meeting, some of the conversations that we should have is, what is the commitment that based on the money we're able to find and put into your budget? It, you know, what have y'all as a, as an elected body thought through where that's gonna go? You know, I, I mean, I'm not asking for specific numbers, but you know, say we're able to find $100 million, is that gonna break down, you know, everybody gets a little bit of it or, or based on your priorities? Because again, I don't want us, just as the state legislators feel that they, they are telling us, well, we gave teachers 2.5% in the BEP funding. I don't want to also be caught, caught kind of putting my foot in my mouth saying, well, we, we gave teachers a pay increase, but it actually not getting passed along. So, so those are the things that I'd like to hear back from, you know, just some dialogue to make sure where, where those, that money would go now and, and between May 29th. Thank you.
My colleagues and I are totally committed to the 10% pay raise, that budget passed with a majority vote. We are totally committed to the increase for bus drivers with, with the, and monitors with the, the bonus. We are totally committed to that. That passed in, in committee, that passed on the board floor. If, if, if we receive those funds, I will promise you, those funds will go exactly where we say they're gonna go.
Any more questions, Council, Councilwoman Murphy? Councilman Elrod.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I being a member of the Budget Committee, I appreciate the opportunity to ask some questions and I'll try to run through them quickly. MNPS is involved in a lawsuit regarding the BEP formula, how our metro schools is underfunded. Where is that lawsuit and when is expected to be resolved, do you think?
I'm not sure. We last got an update about a couple of months ago as to what, I think it's gonna be early next year before they have, you know, the first court, actually have court. And it's a lawsuit in, in, with Shelby County. So it's both of us using the same law firm to bring the same lawsuit.
And to piggyback on that, it's, as you said, it's based upon the inadequacy of state funding for education and part of the issue and the delay was the, the judge that was involved in that retired and so they had to name a new judge and so it postponed it. But we can, we can inquire and get you more specifics on when they think that's actually gonna go to, go to court.
Thank you. Does the BEP formula take into account things in, in calculating the local fiscal capacity, things like the tourist development zones, TIFs, redevelopment zones, where, you know, those are areas that receive dedicated property tax, sales tax, tourism revenue? Does it, do you know if it takes into account that or not of what, you know, the local capacity to, to fund?
I don't know, but happy to ask that question of the Tennessee Department of Education.
Right, in the, in the, and I've been trying to keep up with my questions here. And the proposed budget that you have as part of the 28 million that is proposed in the budget that you would spend on it, it says that $8.9 million has to go to new charter growth. And it's my understanding, so those are not necessarily new charter schools, those are just charter schools that are adding new grades. What, what would happen if Metro MNPS were to wait till the end of the fiscal year to appropriate that 8.9 million? It, you know, you know, what, are we able to do something like that or do, is there any, I guess, out we have to not have to pay that 8.9 million dollars?
Not that I'm aware. My understanding for Metro Legal is that that is a legal requirement based upon state statute that we transfer total state and local revenue per pupil amount to charters monthly based upon their average, based upon their average daily membership, which is how school districts are funded based upon average daily membership. And then that's an estimate, of course, through the year and then we true up and reconcile everything at the end of the year based upon actual state and local revenues and actual overall district enrollment as well as actual enrollment in each charter school.
Thanks. And just the, and I think Budget Chair Shepherd mentioned this, is that hit on, is the term "fully fund MNPS" is said by a lot of folks and, you know, we have the, the mayor's proposed budget is 28.2 million, the budget, your budget proposal's 76.6 million, if I have that right. Is there, and of course you stated, and I think is right, that even that number doesn't take care of all the needs. Is there some, I don't know if it's a magic number, but a, but a guesstimate or, or an actual number of what would be the amount to quote "fully fund" schools?
I don't know that we've gone down that road because it's, you know, way down in the future. We know that, we knew that our resources were limited, so we were just interested in bringing, you know, this particular budget, but it's, it would look something where every year our teachers would get a raise, every year our teachers would get the step increases they were promised, every year our bus drivers would be compensated, our paraprofessors would be compensated fairly and with making a living wage. I mean, that's our number one compensation is our number one priority for the board.
I agree 100% with those priorities. Just, I guess, one, and I guess in that vein, that there are, you know, some that believe Metro, you know, should raise property taxes to increase the amount that's appropriated to MNPS. Does MNPS leadership or the school board believe that the mayor and the metro council should raise property taxes?
I would not be averse to that.
Chair Shepard, can you speak louder?
I'm sorry, I said I would not be averse to that.
And one last question, I believe it's not until, I know it's not this year, but when is it that, that Davidson County schools get hit with the fiscal impact from vouchers?
Based upon the proposal, I believe it's 2021, but I think there's, I think there's still questions about how that would work and, and when it would go into effect.
Thank, thank you. I just wanted, I was just curious. Thank you, sir. That's all my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilman Elrod. Councilwoman Porterfield.
Thank you so much, Chair. Thank you all so much for adding into your budget those four additional workdays for the paraprofessionals. As a former special educator, I know how important it is for our paraprofessionals to receive the training and to receive their professional development, so thank you guys so much for doing that. I do have a few different questions here. My first question was in regards to charter schools and I believe that Councilman Elrod touched on this, but just for clarification purposes, if a student goes to a charter school and for whatever reason that student is not allowed to continue at that charter school and returns back to their school of zone or a public MNPS school, does MNPS recoup any of the money that was given to the charter school for their pupil for that school year?
Yes, we, we transfer dollars to charter schools on a monthly basis based upon the enrollment in that particular month. There are nine student attendance reporting months, 20 days each, that makes up the 180 school days. And so we don't provide, we don't give them funding for the full year upfront, we provide funding on a month-to-month basis. And so if that student is no longer enrolled at that charter school in that month, then they would not be receiving funding for that, for that student.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question was, you talked about a dean of students for the three exceptional education schools, I'm assuming that's Merle, Cora Howe and High Roads. Are you all saying that you are no longer interest, you will no longer be able to have those positions due to budget constraints or are you saying that you are requesting those three dean positions?
Those three dean positions are included in the board's approved budget request and that would be one at Harris Hillman, one at Cora Howe and one at Merle.
Okay, thank you.
Merle at Glenn, which is now located at Glenn.
Okay, thank you. And then the question about cutting the position for equity and diversity, for an executive director for equity and diversity, which is very important work. And I, I definitely understand the concern with making sure that we don't have a top-heavy school system and making sure that the money trickles down to the teachers. However, the, the work of an equity and diversity director is very important work. So would those responsibilities be taken care of by another individual in the organization?
I'll defer to, to Dr. Battle, but that was a, a decision by Dr. Joseph and so I'm, I'm not sure of the plans on that and I don't know if Dr. Battle is either.
My current understanding is that there are other individuals that are within the office who would take on responsibilities and potentially shift to a different department.
Okay, thank you. And then my next question was in regarding to the start and pay for non-certificated employees. I know we're having a conversation trying to raise that ceiling up to $15 an hour to promote a living wage, but what is the current start and pay for those non-certificated employees?
I'm not gonna know off the top of my head, but we're hap, happy to provide you with the pay scale for our support employees and that, and that would give you that information.
Thank you. And then do we also have the current average pay for our paraprofessionals? I know that went up last year from my understanding.
I don't know the current average, but you're correct, we were able to, at, at the council's approval, we were able to increase the paraprofessionals' pay by two pay grades last year, but I don't know the average, but we can provide you that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I know last year was $20,000. I had the opportunity to advocate for our paraprofessionals last year from the other side, so I appreciate that. And then one more question regarding the bus drivers and monitors, you talked about a $1 per hour pay increase. Could you also, when you get this other information, could you get the current hourly rate for those bus drivers and monitors as well?
Yes, that would be included on that support, support staff salary scale.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, Dr. Battle spoke of 111 positions that, that were cut. Could you clarify that for me? Was that for the 18, 19 school year?
That's correct. It was for the, the current 18, 19 school year to make it balance with, with the funding allocation that we were given.
Okay, and were those primarily the reading recovery teachers or were these different positions?
There were approximately 85 in the reading recovery program, the remainder, there were around a little over 30 central office positions that were cut and included in that number.
Okay, and then, last question for clarification, those 85 reading recovery positions that were cut, those teachers did have the opportunity to get another teaching position with, with their metro, correct? So that they were cut from reading recovery, but they still were, had the ability to be employed by MNPS as a teacher?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porterfield. Councilman Syracuse.
There we go. Thank you, Madam Chair. You all have my deepest respects and appreciation. Thanks for being here. Step increases are currently frozen, is that correct?
We didn't receive funding to provide a step increase in the current year. The proposal is, as the board has approved, would be a step increase for next year, which at a cost of $8 million.
How long have they been frozen? How many years?
There was, in 2017, 18, there was a 3% raise plus a step increase and then 2018, 19, current year, there was no increase for any employee.
But before 17, there wasn't, there hadn't been one in how long?
It had been a number of years before that when there was just a, an across-the-board percentage pay raise increase with no step increase, that's correct.
Okay, I mean, the data I'm, I'm looking at shows that, that of the top, or the five area school districts, Nashville is at the bottom for step 10. The 10%, was the lack of step increases over the past decade, was the 10% established to try to correct that or can you elaborate about how we got to 10? I'm, I echo Councilman Polley that if we could do 20, you know, we can never undervalue teachers, but how did we get to 10?
Well, you're correct. We were trying to make up for past, you know, errors and not, you know, complete, giving our teachers their step increases for a number of years, except for, with the exception of the one year that Mr. Henson spoke of. And so we came up with 10%. I mean, we would love to have done 20%, but you know, we know that's pie in the sky and so we thought that 10%, you know, doing it in increments like that would be fairer budget-wise.
So there wasn't really a quantification about how to get to 10%, but, or was there?
It was.
It was?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. If you all had more revenue, kind of alluding to what the Council Lady Benfield was, was talking about, with those positions that you're looking to reduce, would you bring them back if you had additional revenue above and beyond? And how, how critical are they, are they considered secondary that they are, are being reduced? But...
I'll, I'll defer to Dr. Battle, but as Ms. Shepherd has indicated, employee compensation is the board and the administration's top priority. So that's where we would be looking to put additional funding in addition to instructional materials and textbooks as well as social emotional learning. So until we know what that number might be and go through our budget process, it's difficult to say, but, but I do know what our, what the board's budget priorities are and those position reductions have been included. position reductions have been included since the initial proposal on March 5th.
Understood. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Syracuse. Councilwoman Porterfield, are you seeking additional? Okay, Councilwoman Porterfield.
I apologize, I forgot one of my questions. Have you all looked at any type of multi-year compensation plan to try to get the employees a more adequate, on a more adequate pay scale, pay rate?
Actually, we have. We, there was a compensation committee that we had that was composed of teachers, central office staff, and I was actually on that, because there was a board member that needed to be on there, and I was on there. And so we did come up with a plan to, you know, make pay increases, more every year, increase the pay for professional development. You know, there were several stages that we had in that compensation committee plan that addressed that.
Thank you. And then one follow-up question from the council members' question about that 10%. You said that you all did have a formula as to how you came up with the 10%. Can you expound on how you all came up with the 10%?
I'm not sure that there was a formula. We were just putting pencil or paper as far as, you know, what a step increase would cost every year and what that would be percentage-wise.
Any further questions, Councilwoman Porterfield? Any other council members seeking recognition? Any other council members seeking recognition? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Battle. Thank you, Chair Shepherd, Mr. Henson, and the school board members, and to everyone in the audience that came, thank you so much. This concludes the Board of Education budget hearing. If we can have informal motion, make your way down.